All right, I'm gonna call this council meeting back to order at 5:26. Is that about right? With a roll call, please.
Mr. Ray Allen.
Here.
Mr. Emerson.
Here.
Mr. Morris.
Here.
Mr. Marcus.
Here.
Here. And we'll order of business, we'll report, officers report, Sonia.
You want to do financial statements?
Okay, let's go pay the bills.
Yeah, let's pay the bills. Let me get my number out here.
Okay, approval of the claims for April 18th through May 2nd, 2025, for the amount of?
One hundred ninety-three thousand, eight hundred fifty dollars and eighty-three cents.
Tracy, please. Motion.
Motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Tracy.
Mr. Ray Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Ray Allen.
Yes.
Mr. Morris.
Gap.
Mr. Marcus.
Yes.
Yes, attorney's report.
No reports this evening.
No report. Sonia.
I just have a couple of quick things for the group mayor. One, I am back from the Illinois Public Service Institute, year one of three. I am exhausted and tired and I'm gonna catch up and I'm gonna keep working at it. So if you have items in my inbox, I assure you, I will be working all week to try to catch myself back up. But it was a wonderful experience. At the end of the day, I do appreciate the council allowing me to get out of the office period and go to these types of conferences. I appreciate that. Also, I wanted to just call out that we have a public works proclamation on our agenda tonight, but also there are flyers floating around, so please feel free to join us. We've got those into the schools and those go out to our schools in our district, both Prairieville and then South Lloyd School District. But looking forward to celebrating our public works teams again. It will probably just take place after Christmas and it seems like the easiest end of the block is not coordinated. We were trying to add in a food truck this year, but we couldn't get them coordinated well enough, so it'll look very similar to what it has the last couple of years, but please join us for that. And then lastly, I just wanted to remind everyone that we will be having the Memorial Day Parade, and I know that I've heard at least from one of you, but if you plan to walk in that, please let me know. I will get our logistics coordinated. We've got all kinds of candy to hand out, so now I just need, you know, as many of you as possible to hand out candy to our residents.
I thought you were gonna get golf carts.
I thought you were gonna get golf carts.
All right.
Do we have a golf cart waiting by our?
I have like, pretty much any shoes on.
All right.
But I would love to have as many of you as can make it for the memorial day.
Chief, I give you a report.
Yep, Tracy.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Everybody set up a packet and start off with a statistical overview. Nothing crazy about the statistics. Calls for service were down two percent from the quarter, down three percent for the year. Traffic crashes down thirty-nine percent, and I think that has to do with having more of a mild winter, I believe. City ordinance violations, down thirty-three percent. And it probably had something to do with the weather. However, interestingly enough, it's up sixty-four percent for the year. Criminal arrests, fifty-five, compared to sixty-six last quarter, so down sixteen percent and up five percent for the year. And traffic expectations were about the same for the quarter, however, they were up thirty-three percent from a year ago. Training, did a lot of training as usual. Department-wise, we did more training, law updates, psychology of domestic violence, stopstick training, and CPR AED. I should thank the Prairie Department for putting on that training course at the Prairie Department. We had eighteen different specialty trainings, and you know, you have them in front, you're not gonna read them all, but two key ones. We had advanced financial crime investigations, drug interdiction training, peer support training for officer wellness, and resources to aid law enforcement investigations. Next, new reporter, all the fancy charts that Administrator Clark, her team puts together for your visual. And then we'll skip to the back where some miscellaneous events and updates. We have eighteen active and compliant sex offenders within South Lloyd. The one that, where it says in plus-one offender registration is on hold. He did come into data, so we now have nineteen active and compliant sex offenders. Kim fulfilled twenty requests for FOIA. She noted that total two hundred and twenty-three pages and one audiovisual request took her fifty-five minutes and fourteen seconds. So very accurate and specific. Sergeant Manion Officer West conducted their tobacco compliance checks under Winnebago County Health Department. We issued city ordinance violations for three businesses that sold to minors. We seized one vehicle, a two thousand and twelve black GMC Acadia, this last quarter that's pending in court. Detective Reed passed all the promotional exams, and as you know, he was promoted to detective sergeant in April. Administrator Clark McKee and Officer Gares conducted a presentation for the Lowberg Middle School, awareness on the dangers of social media. They really enjoyed going out there and asked that they come back each quarter. I spoke to students at Black Hawk Tech and their criminal justice program and tried to, you know, gain attention to the police department. We were, at that time, in a hiring process. We currently, we had twenty-six applicants, but unfortunately, eight showed up to the test, and we have one lateral candidate, so we have a total of nine potential candidates right now. We need to hire two, we're short two right now. The FBI Technical Security CDS audit was submitted and approved. That took Cameron and I literally months to accomplish, but it was finally approved. I attended the Cloud Haven grand opening, and I just noted that we have not had any issues at Cloud Haven whatsoever. Officer Russell Detective Reed, Detective Sergeant Reed conducted a full evidence audit. There were no issues happy to report. Of those arrests that we talked about, two of them possession control pornography. There were several cases. Detective Sergeant Reed and his staff did a phenomenal job on those cases, and those are still pending. And finally, so that we dealt with our Prairie Department and had a battle with Nashville Drive against Rockton, Roscoe. We did not win, but it was for a good cause.
You get it next year.
We'll get it next year. Yeah. That's my report.
Thank you. Any questions? All right, moving on. Correspondence. Proclamation for the National Public Works Week. That's me, I guess. All right, National Public Work Week proclamation, May 18th through 24th. People, purpose, and presence. Whereas the public work of professional focus on infrastructure facilities and service that are vitally important to the sustained and resilient community, to public health, high quality of life, and well-being of the people of South Lloyd. Whereas these infrastructures, facilities, and services could not be provided without dedicated effort in public works professionals who are engineers, managers, employees of all level of government and private sectors, who is responsible for rebuilding, improving, protecting the nation's transportation, water supply, water treatment, solid waste system, public building, and other structures and facilities essential to our citizens. And whereas it is in public interest for citizens, civic leaders, children in South Lloyd to gain knowledge of the maintenance, maintain the ongoing interest, understanding the importance of public works and public works programs in their respective communities. And whereas the year 2025 marks the sixty-fifth annual National Public Work Week, it's sponsored by the American Public Works Association, Canadian Public Works Association, be it now. I resolve, I, Mayor Tom Fitzgerald, do hereby designate the week, May 18th through 24th, 2025, as the National Public Works Week. I urge all citizens to join with the representatives of the National Public Works Association and government agencies and activities, events, and ceremonies designed to pay tribute to the public works professionals, engineers, managers, employees, to recognize the substantial contribution they have made to the public, protecting the national health, safety, and advancing quality of life for all. In witness to this, I here to set my hand, cause a seal, done May 5th, 2025. This is National for Public Works. Kenny's got a hat, you can show the hat that they gave us all. And we will be down there two weeks from now, on a Tuesday. Everybody stop down. And, do you guys want to see them?
Well, I have a decent soda down there, it's been a long time.
You're gonna meet Jeff and Ryan, you guess that?
We'll be there.
All right. I'm gonna, moving on to a discussion and motion items. Discussion with Stephanie from the Animal County Animal Control Council, which you are not. But go ahead, if you want to.
So I just need to correct the record, I'm not actually with animal services. Stephanie is the executive director of Care for Pets, and I'm the state of boots humane investigator. Our organization is partnered with Winnebago County Animal Services. We're actually starting by past county leadership to help community members and municipalities in the role of animal welfare. So that's why I am, hello. I'm also really not a cat person, I have six dogs. I care, I care about wearing black, so no cat hair. I know, I care about cats, but we do everything, so I'm not like here. I was asked to be here to talk about this topic because it's in the animal welfare industry, and I go to national conferences and know best practices, and helped with guidance in other municipalities to help poor and poor businesses, so I was asked to be here in regards to that. So talking about community cats first, to define that, community cat could mean a cat that is not socialized. It could mean a cat that is lost from its home. It could be an indoor-outdoor cat that is outside. It could be a cat that somebody moved and they threw out and didn't give it a look at. So it could mean a bunch of different things. In regards to this municipality, I understand you have two ordinances that are basically at-large for cats. Most of them, municipalities in Winnebago County, including Winnebago County, don't have cat leash laws, we call them leash laws, for running at large. And you know what, Roscoe does, but they have an exemption for community cats. So I know there have been some concerns in this municipality with cats and being picked up and taken in traps and what ends up happening with them and why. So I know that there are nuisance behaviors, I'm gonna give you a handout on that, that come with cats, and some people don't like cats in their yards and, you know, they can't hang or they sell or whatever. But there are modern solutions for that versus what's happening. What's happening is because you have an ordinance that says cats can't be loose, that if someone catches a cat, they go to animal services, they're evaluated for 24 hours. First of all, there's no state statute straight hold for cats, so there is for dogs, but not for cats. So if you're a cat owner and someone picks up your cat and it goes to animal control, it's 24 hours that's extended over state statute to get your cat. In that amount of time, it's evaluated and then a decision is made on what's happening with it. It's brought in and it's evaluated to be not friendly within those 24 hours, it's euthanized. So basically, leash laws are not great for pet owners who let their cats in and out. It's also not great that we're trying to eradicate them, basically. This is like an eradication method, which is very old school. And there's a vacuum effect that comes with that. You, per the American Vet Association, should have, for your population size, approximately five hundred, give or take, outdoor cats in your community. There's no way you can eradicate that in an amount of time, that it's not going to fill with another cat, with more kittens being born, with someone else abandoning their cat. It's just not, it's really not a thing, which is why most municipalities have moved away from it. Your numbers for stray pickups for cats, this is not people dropping cats off, are actually extremely pretty low. So in 2022, the county only picked up seven, 2023, six, 2024, they only picked up fourteen, so it's not really a great number that's running out service of, there's only usually two officers on for five hundred square miles. So I mean, that's, it's a lot of area for officers to patrol, but not that many cats that are coming out too. Talking about public safety, I'm trying to get this fast. As far as that being a concern, that we need a leash law so we can separate writing people and should avoid it all that as well. And in 2022, you had four cat bites, all of those were owned cats, people giving medication, things of that nature. 2023, there was only one cat bite in your municipality, 2024, six, and two of those were described as, what I'm gonna quote, strays. So I think that the community, what I'm hearing, is wanting to maybe put, not maybe, they want to put in exemption or strike some of ordinance language, so that the running-at-large ordinances don't include cats or community cats, so that they aren't ending up people losing their pets unnecessarily being adopted out, unnecessarily being, unintentionally being euthanized. It's just, it's pretty, it's kind of an old school way of doing it. Trap, neuter, release, return to field is more, I just came back from a conference in Nevada, is the way it's been going for quite some time now. And actually, animal control, they're fully staffed with veterinary care, which right now they're not. They actually provide that service to municipalities that don't have cat leash laws, that if the cat gets brought in, they're altering it, vaccinating it, and returning it back to, microchipping it and returning it back to the colony, it doesn't mean anything. So if you have questions, I'm happy to hear them.
Mayor, I don't have a question, but, and I apologize, I think that the council was under the impression that you were from the Winnebago County Animal Control Department. That's at least how it was on the agenda.
Yeah, I know, that's why I was correcting our.
Yeah, so we did have a presentation by Winnebago County Animal Services. Gosh, it's probably been quite a while ago now, when the intergovernmental agreement was entered into with animal control. And I think that there is language, we'll have to pull that animal control agreement, but my recollection from the presentation was that, and it was, I'm just looking online, the administrator now is Jennifer Stacy. I don't remember Jennifer Stacy being the one that came and spoke, but I believe it was a gentleman that came who was.
Probably Brett Frazier.
Yes.
And Jennifer, and Jennifer knows I'm here, Jennifer helps me with all of this, I talk to.
Okay, great.
We're partnered with them.
Wonderful.
Yeah, we do, I mean, I asked her, she wanted to come herself, she was like, no, go ahead. I talk to them eighteen times a day.
Wonderful.
Yeah.
So when Brett came, when he gave his presentation, he outlined the fact that, again, I don't know if things have changed, but they would trap, neuter, and release. So I don't know if something has changed in their procedure and they're not doing it that way anymore, but that's at least the presentation that was given, so.
I talked to him too.
Yeah, so my recommendation would be, you know, that we have another follow-up with animal services to find out, you know, when did that change, why did that change?
Well, it changed because of our law.
But our ordinance, Mayor.
Yeah, I just.
Has been on the books since 1972.
Yeah, right, but that's the reason they said they trapped cats, is because it says on 10-23, it says, no dog or cat can be run loose in the city, limits shall be impounded.
Yeah.
And 10-22.
And before we entered into that IGA with Winnebago County Animal Services, we had to send them all of these ordinances.
Right.
And I do remember that becoming a topic of discussion, and the city was advised, regardless, we were not euthanizing, we're trapping, we're neutering and releasing.
Yeah, we are euthanizing, we found out.
So if that's changed, and that's something they probably need to put in writing to us.
Yeah, and then, go ahead, Stan, give your name.
Okay, sorry, I can just be finished to that. I can definitely ask Jennifer to reach out, that's no problem. I do know, because I also work, so it was Jennifer, then it was Brett, and then now it's Jennifer again, and I've worked with all of them.
Right.
And so I do know upon Brett's departure, that there were some things that were maybe not so clear in communication.
Okay.
So I think I'll have Jennifer reach back out to you guys.
That'd be wonderful.
But that's not what's happening. They're following, the IGA, they're following your ordinance.
Our ordinance, yeah.
For our municipality as they, as they need to.
Sure.
That's what they agree.
It sounds like there's just some misunderstanding.
Well, yes, and I called to make sure, because I, you know, I knew at one time, because I've been here for 12 years, sitting up here someplace, but I found out that we used to, we actually paid them too, some money, you know, for so many animals that they did. And I remember doing that, and, but when I talked to animal services, they says, no, your law says you can't, it has to be on a leash.
Well, that's the IGA's.
Well, it's it, yeah. It can't be running loose.
Right.
It never said you had to be on a leash, but it said it can't be running loose.
Yeah, it's a running at large.
Yeah, running at large, whatever.
It's a running at large.
And so, I know.
Which is kind of strange application for cats, since a lot of people let their cats go in and out.
Can you let Sarah talk to you?
Yeah. So I am Sergeant Wayne, and I am the owner and founder of South Lloyd TNR Rescue. Since 2022, we have helped over three hundred feral stray cats and kittens in South Lloyd and other communities. So the numbers that they have that are showing through Winnebago is probably lower because we are getting the blunt of all of those extra strays that are coming, and we are the ones getting the calls. We are the ones taking in all the feral kittens that are being born to the feral mothers. So Winnebago County is not seeing those numbers because we have been taking that on, as far as those numbers. There's also the Animal Welfare Care Act, well, sorry, let's go to that. My understanding is that Winnebago County Animal Control no longer actually traps feral cats, they no longer have a TNR program. That means that if they do not have a TNR program, that means that it is for communities, and people that have TNR programs are the ones that are going to have to go out to help this cat population, because we cannot count on the Winnebago Animal Control Populat-, or Animal, Winnebago County, because they no longer have that program. And if they are something, like a feral cat, they are being euthanized. Or if it's one that they do deem feral, even though they're not feral, so many cats that are strays will act feral when they're picked up and they're really not, they are being euthanized. There is also, in the Animal Control Act, there is, it states that the trap, neuter, return, TNR throughout the state of Illinois, that individual municipalities may not forbid that the practice of TNR is going on. There's, it also states that feral caretakers, that we are not owners, or people that are doing these TNR, that we are exempt from those laws. We do not own these community cats because they were born outside, they are wild. So they're, so feral caretakers or people like me that are doing the trap, neuter, return, if we are feeding them, you know, we get a lot of backlash because how dare we fed them, but in order to get them in the trap, we have to be able to bait them. So even though I may go do a colony, I'm not constantly feeding these pet or petting, but I have to be able to bait and feed so I can get them euth-, or not even, but get them fit and stayed. I think that might be all I have for at the moment, sorry.
So in other words, we need to.
She's right about state statute.
Yeah, I just wanted to bring the state statutes up, that there is state law of that.
I have questions, since we'll probably never have.
Sorry.
People as passionate about cats in this situation ever again.
You can call me anytime.
And I understand that.
We are an action.
We got more, we got all kinds of people.
I have a question, why don't we just, you gotta get a tag, right? Gotta get a tag for your dog.
Well, no, these are feral.
I don't let it be feral, but how they get feral, parent, people who let a dog.
Yeah, people let them go.
Well, they got a tag, you call people saying, what are you?
All right, all right, well, well.
Can I ask a question?
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, I interrupted, just so, we cannot have just everyone speaking out at one given time.
All right, well, well.
Because it's a city council meeting, you have to state your name, and you can only speak, when an item is on an agenda, you can only speak when you've been called upon by the chair.
Ryan.
I was just gonna ask, so it sounds as though our ordinance is outdated, right? It probably needs to include some sort, some form of tag and release, right? Because that's what, and what you were saying, let me make sure I heard it right, is we should have five hundred feral cats, or is that just because of our population, that's what exists? Right?
I can answer, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, based on, this is the American Vet Association, they have calculated a formula based on a municipality's people population, what their community cat population is like normally running at.
Okay.
So even though Sarah's doing the work that she's doing, which is, which is great, it keeps, like, you have to keep doing it. It doesn't, unless you're hitting it hard. Right, which Sarah is doing, which is great, it's just, they keep having work.
I was just gonna say, so we need to do some homework.
Yeah, that's what I was saying, that, well, I was bringing, the reason I brought, put this on here is bringing attention to our, our ordinance and how Winnebago feels about it, you know, I mean, because it's a, it's a two different things. It's, Winnebago County trapping seven cats in a year, and we got five hundred here, they're not too involved in it either, but it's the idea of, they are, people are breaking the law, and they don't want to be breaking the law, and they're feeding the animals, and they're, I mean, when it's twenty below out there, I mean, we've done it too, you know, I mean, so it's a type thing that we gotta, do we want a lease law when Winnebago County doesn't have it, where Roscoe has it only? And Roscoe's the same size we are, you know, I mean, but Rockton doesn't, Winnebago County doesn't, so I was just saying this, do we want to get in line with Winnebago County the way they're handling it? So we can ask, draw up something that's a little different, that, that just, that doesn't have the lease law in it, because that's what seems to be the stopping point, is a lease law.
At, at large.
Uh, pardon me, go ahead.
At, at large.
At large, well.
It's your at-large ordinance.
Yeah, I mean, however you put it, it's loose animal. Yes, sir.
Yeah, my name is Pat Hatch, I just have a question.
Your name is Pat Hatch, huh?
Yeah. But I've been sitting here listening. We put tags on dogs, right?
Yeah.
They get them little trackers and stuff like that, okay? So I have a cat, it's my responsibility to keep that cat in my property, in my house, if it's a house or indoor cat. If a cat owner sits right here and it gets out, and it turns into a feral cat, it should go back to the people who owned the cat. These guys shouldn't have to pay, take money out of their pockets to feed somebody's cat that got out of somebody's property. All they gotta do is scan them, they gotta chip in them, scan them, call them, say, hey, we got your cat, this is how this is gonna cost you.
But, you know, you asked Pat.
Yeah, you gotta draw a line, you gotta say, you gotta charge them, because they're gonna keep breaking the law. You gotta keep breaking the law.
Well, we understand that, what's the problem is not, not just the people with their cats, it's, people move.
I know.
People move and leave cats. And we're just, we're trying to find a solution for the problem, and.
That's the only problem that I have, with a cat, it's like having a kid, you gotta take the responsibility for it.
Right. Yeah, and we, and we got people that are in the.
I understand what you're saying.
That are doing it, and they're, but we want to make sure that it's legal.
Right, I understand.
So that, and that's what we like to get changed, and get the, get the ordinance changed.
It's gonna be hard to change a lease law for a cat, because there are a lot of people.
Hard to catch them to begin with, but.
Yeah, I understand, I understand, but that's just my concern, I have cats all over my house, my neighbors and so many cats, and I just tell them, you know, I was, I have a cat, please have it over there.
Thank you, thank you, Pat. I think we, anybody else got anything to say, anybody different? If not, we're gonna move on. We give the instructions to our attorney, she can.
I will work on it, for sure, yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I appreciate everybody coming.
Would you like me to send it to Stephanie, too?
Yeah, send all the information to everybody here, make sure.
If you could just leave a card or something, that'd be great.
And you guys, if you want some information on it too, we'll get it to you too.
I can give you my information if you'd like, Amy.
That'd be great, yes, thank you.
Wendy.
You want to just leave it with the clerk?
I know, I know you two Wendy's are part of this.
Tracy, Tracy, do you have some of my cards?
Can I just come before you guys adjourn?
No, we're not gonna adjourn, we're gonna move on.
We have to take care of our park, better than equipment, we have to take.
All right, well, okay, we're done, we're moving on, Pat. I understand that.
You gotta listen, because I'm just a taxpayer.
We're gonna hire you, we want to hire you to take care.
So this is getting crazy down here.
All right, we're gonna, we might have to hire you for BA.
That was up to her and him. I already applied for that job, and her and her were there. When Larry, when Larry Jones had me there, it was, it was good.
I know, I remember.
That's my concern.
Let me talk about it, Pat.
I know, but I, I just want to listen, but some of this stuff. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't come to listen, but some of this stuff is.
Okay, all right, we got it. All right, thanks, Pat.
I'm a citizen, and I know all you people as friends, but our town is in range.
Hopefully you guys like what we are doing and just keep the cameras.
All right, we're gonna, thank you everybody for, do you wanna say something?
The, the relies.
Wendy, if you want. Okay, all right. You look like you were gonna chew me out or something, so, all right. All right, here we go, let's, uh, move on to, uh, discuss approved ordinance 2846, adopting a capitalization policy. Would, uh, uh, get a motion?
So moved, second.
Uh, who's got this?
Thank you.
Sonia?
I guess I.
Capitalization.
Yeah.
This is a down topic.
Don, okay.
Generally, uh, in the sewer fund, we, uh, depreciate assets.
Yeah.
In the governmental funds, we depreciate assets that you don't typically see because the depreciation only appears on the GASB 34 statement, which is in the audit report open. Uh, this is just a clarification of, of the allocation and the expense for depreciation for both sewer and governmental funds. Um, and, and we've been maintaining a fixed asset schedule for a number of years, but, uh, the dollar amount that is to be capitalized kind of fluctuates. Uh, some years it was really low, some years it's pretty high. So this is a kind of a clarification to establish a routine for what gets capitalized, whether it be in the sewer fund or whether it be in the government.
This recommendation comes from our auditors, um, so we do need to get it buttoned up. I know, I asked Ryan to lay extra eyes on it and make sure that if, if you had any financial concerns about annual limits or things included, not included, that we, we have some comment, but we do need to get it.
What's the rate of, uh, what's the rate of depreciation a year?
Well, it depends on the life of the asset. And, and that's the key factor is, uh, in the case of police squad cars, uh, they typically last three years. Uh, we'll have a truck that maybe lasts 20 years, but, so it depends on the asset and that's why we have, uh, in the policy, asset ranges, particularly for some of those asset classes. Um, and it's just a way of keeping track and, and obviously, and when it gets sold, uh, whatever the asset value, if it's fully depreciated, then whatever it's sold for is a gain on fixed, sale of fixed assets. And, uh, if it's not fully depreciated, then obviously, the difference between the sale price and the book value is what goes into, uh, recognized as sale, a gain on sale of fixed assets.
Are we locked in on this? I mean, like, when you, like you say, the depreciation varies on what, what we're doing. I mean, is this the same next year and the same the next year, or does this go down in depreciation or what?
Well, it's, uh, this policy established that depreciation is spread across. It's not like, uh, in government or in the commercial accounting, the double due, uh, depreciation, that you would take higher depreciation in the first year, ours is purely street line, mainly because it's more of a bookkeeping issue than it is a financial issue.
That's what I was wondering. Is, uh, all right, that's I, questions? Any problems? All right, Trace.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes, uh, C, discuss approved ordinance 2847, adding to the second deputy clerk position to Division 5.5, Deputy City Clerk, Article 3, Officers and Employees, and Chapter 2, Administration of the Code Ordinance. Motion.
Motion. Second.
I can take this one for you, Mayor. Um, basically, we have always had two people who have reported to Tracy in City Hall. Uh, um, the way that that has always looked is that one of them would be called a deputy clerk and one of them would really be called an administrative assistant. And it just isn't the way that it actually works in City Hall, especially with Tracy preparing for retirement sometime soon. Um, she has two people who report to her, they both should do whatever tasks makes the most sense for them to be able to take on. There shouldn't be a, this is Tracy's right hand and this is, you know, the, the lowest person on the totem pole who does all the most menial tasks. It really should be two people who are both capable of taking very different tasks from Tracy. Uh, but Jennifer is already doing a lot of that, uh, we have shuffled utility billing under her plate and, you know, she's gonna be at these meetings so that, you know, she would make the most sense to be the person to take over the meetings. We just need to have two people at Tracy's, um, department who could do any of Tracy's tasks, not so much, you'll do all of these things and you'll do the bottom of the barrel tasks, just isn't how it works.
We've talked about this before, cross-training is something that we should do with everybody so that there's, in that office, if somebody's missing, if they go off for two weeks, we gotta have somebody do the job and it's, it should be equal all across the board. Uh, I mean, anybody else?
And then also, if I can add here, the, the pay is the same. Uh, we're not asking for more money, we're not asking for another person. Um, as that person would take on responsibilities like Jennifer has with, um, sewer billing, that's when we would ask the council for, hey, we would like to give this person an adjustment of a dollar or two or five percent because they've taken on this responsibility. So it's no more money, it's no more people, it's just a change in their title.
Yeah, my dad, the transition period when Melissa left and Karen left, uh, it was pretty smooth, for you guys did a great job, that's why it's, it's very important. It is, I mean, I know it was rough, but you guys got it done, that's, that's the main thing.
We are grateful that it appears to be smooth.
Well, okay. All right, it is, all right.
I have a question for you.
Nope.
This is Pat Hatch. Where are we gonna get all this?
No, no, we're done, you can't talk after.
Hey, I'm gonna talk. He right there, he gonna arrest me, because you guys are doing something that's not right.
No, Pat, Pat, we're asking to quit.
You can't, you can't, I regret my saying, and I told you.
No, no, you didn't get called upon.
Okay.
You didn't get called upon, I'd call, I'm the one, I'm the one who calls upon everybody.
No, that's why I'm doing that.
All right, well, then that's a good idea, all right. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Edgerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes, discuss approved resolution 6615, approving the professional service agreement proposal with, how, how do you pronounce that?
Hack.
Hack.
Hack, hack.
Hack, I, I didn't want to say hatch. Uh, for field service partnership services and nitrate sensor and controller equipment. Motion, please.
Motion. Second.
And just for the record, the cost is, uh, $4,494.
Um, okay.
So I'll speak on that.
Yes, sir.
We, uh, had the attorneys take a look at the service contract, we made a couple of changes. They, uh, graciously made those changes for us, um, I think it's all good with the attorneys. Um, we have these, uh, nitrate probes, they, uh, check for, uh, total amount of nitrogen in our treatment plant, uh, they're giving us fits. And this is the best way I can find to get, uh, a trained professional out to work on them when we need to. We've done the work ourselves and sent them in to get repaired, uh, but that just doesn't seem to be working out very well. So this could be a service thing that continues on every year moving forward. Um, but those probes are about, uh, I think the last probe we got was like 18,000 hours. And that doesn't count the controller. So trying to find a better way to maintain the equipment for treatment plant, uh, what we've been doing isn't working, so I'm sure this can take care of that.
Okay, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes, uh, Does approve, uh, 16, 6616, approving the professional service agreement proposal by Faragram to perform environmental protection agency Brownfield cleanup in the property located at 420 North Black Hawk Boulevard. Motion, please.
So moved, second.
I can take this one for you, Mayor.
There you go.
So we, uh, we were awarded the $1.4 million grant, uh, to clean up 420 Black Hawk Boulevard. And, uh, we put that out, uh, to RFP to get a qualified professional to oversee that grant for us. Um, usually what I submit is just a scoring tally of the people who have, uh, put a bid in, uh, but this time we only had one. So Faragram has to still go through the same process, uh, we created a committee, we score them, uh, their score is listed in there as a 43.3 out of 45, there are three people on the review committee. Um, but what this letter includes is just a little bit of the extra effort that we went to, um, to make sure that we tried to get multiple people to vote down. Uh, we've left it open for longer than is required in our purchasing policy. And then I also followed up with a, uh, an individual meeting with Carrie Craigin, who is our EPA project manager, to make sure that, hey, is there anything else that we can do, should do? Uh, we only got this one request for proposal. Uh, she said that we are good, we met all of the EPA requirements, we met our, uh, purchasing requirements, and that we can, uh, we can accept the proposal of, of Faragram.
Excellent.
It took me a little longer than normal because I wanted to make sure that we, we went through all the appropriate steps.
Okay, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton.
Commissioner, Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes, discuss approved resolution 6617, approving agreement of professional service with Faragram Engineering Environmental for assistance with land application of sledge permit. Motion.
So moved, second.
Jeff.
Me again, uh, this one is related to our sledge disposal. Um, some of the regulations have changed with the new treatment plan, we're doing, having to do things a little differently and I need assistance to get in this permit, taking care of, uh, the Faragram amount. Uh, was, I believe, 4,800, uh, 49? 4,900, thank you. And, uh, that's not to exceed. If we don't have to redo, uh, land application sites, it'll be, uh, much less, but that's only if we don't have to redo it, and that'll be up to EPA whether we, they accept what we provide or they'll ask us to redo that as well.
And also, it has been a little long time since we have done this, right, Jeff? Normally, it's something we would do once a week.
Uh, the permit's a five-year permit, but we're behind on that, so.
Okay, all right, to me.
Any other questions about it?
Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edgerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes, discuss approved resolution 6618, approving agreement for professional service, uh, with Faragram Engineering Environment NPDES, permit review and assistance for one year. Motion.
Motion. Second.
Me again.
Yep.
Uh, this, yes, I am, uh, this one, I believe, is $11,000, uh, um, not to exceed. Um, it allows for assistance and aid in a quarterly review of our permit. Uh, currently, our current permit is expired, we're waiting for the EPA to issue us a new one, a new draft permit and then a new permit. The current one was expired last September. Um, we've applied for it back in, uh, a year ago, March, so, uh, March of '24. Um, I'm expecting there to be a lot more regulations to come and a lot more special conditions, um, but we want to make sure that we're hitting on all of those. So this, uh, will be a quarterly review where somebody, some peers will come in, uh, with me and go through it and make sure that every, uh, T is crossed and dot, I is dotted.
Anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes, discuss approved resolution 6619, approving amendment to development agreement with Rock River Development LLC. Motion.
Motion. Second.
I can take this one for you, Mayor. Um, so, uh, I think at the end of 2020, we, uh, we don't have my fingertips anymore, uh, we started this agreement at the end of '23, I think, November, December of '23, yeah. Um, and because of the delay in trying to work with the UP to acquire the right-of-way at Sherrill Avenue, uh, we've really just had to take this thing down the road a little further. Um, that also encailed, hey, if they want this right-of-way, we need to get that included into our racked cleanup plan with the EPA. Uh, that was a time-consuming process and really what you have before you is just an ask from Rock River Development to keep our agreement in place, even though we are having to extend, uh, the timelines because of the right-of-way acquisition and efforts there. I will also add that we still have not gotten, uh, Warren Fuzzies to offer $70,000, $75,000 to UP for that right-of-way, um, and in fact, it, it appears that it might not happen. So now, uh, we are asking our developers to come up with a plan that may include, uh, their development without the one acre property in the middle of the Sherrill Avenue site. So it's not changing anything in the agreement, it is just asking for more time, uh, mostly because, uh, we needed more time to try to battle with the, the right-of-way UP. And complete our EPA cleanup grant, that takes place there.
Why do they want to play?
Yeah.
For a piece of property.
They don't even know they own it.
They didn't even know they have. They didn't even know what they have.
You know how they pay taxes on their properties? They pay them all at once. They don't pay on parcels, they pay them all at once, the railroads. So whatever they got, let's say they got 50 acres here, they just pay 50 acres, they don't even know they own it.
I think what needs to be made clear though is, is this is holding up a $90 million development project. One acre of land owned by the railroad company is blocking a $90 million project from happening in this town. I think that's what needs to be spelled out the most. Anybody in this room that's listening, that's listening, can reach out to the UP railroad company and demand that they sell this property to the city, anybody that can.
I can add that in the beginning, we tried to play really nice in the sandbox with all of the entities, um, but recently, we have asked Carrie Craigin from the EPA to get a little bit more involved. Uh, she did send a pretty pointed letter, um, it has gone on deaf ears, I don't expect a response, but, uh, the EPA is also trying to push the UP to get this thing done with us for the greater good of all parties interested. And we have got any motion?
Hey, Tracy.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton. Yes. Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Upstanding. Discuss approved resolution 6620, authorizing the city to sell surplus city property. Motion.
So moved, second.
I can take this one for you.
All righty.
Uh, this is, uh, 910 Ingersoll, it is the property that is right next to the, uh, South Park laundromat. Um, the owners have come to us and asked if they could purchase that lot. It's a very small lot, there's nothing on the lot, it's just green grass with one tree that the city continues to mow, uh, and we periodically maintain the tree that hangs over their building. Um, so what we have is, uh, we kind of did a deep dive in our city files to figure out why we would have ever hung on to that property. And all that Shawna and I can really come up with is that, at one point, we did recognize that particular block of Gartner may have a parking crunch, and so we were hanging on to any parcel that we could get our hands on in case we should ever need to improve the parking for that block. Um, we, as staff, can't come up with any good reason to really continue to hang on other than that. I mean, things are not demanding parking so much that we should, uh, prevent this. Exactly. So, um, the, the property owners have come forward, uh, if we deem this property surplus tonight, we'll have a couple of options of ways we can get rid of it. Uh, we can either put it out for a closed bid, or if we want to make sure that this property owner has the property next to the laundromat, um, we could sell the property for 80%, at least 80% of the appraised value, the appraisal will cost us a couple hundred bucks to get done. Um, so it should, it should be pretty quick and seamless, but.
Yep.
That's where we're at with this one.
And then Jeff won't have to move, or, uh, Jeff, Steve.
Ryan.
Ryan. Boy.
Yeah, they can't come up with any good reason to keep on with it either.
All right, motion? All right, Tracy, please.
Commissioner Allen.
Yes.
Commissioner Edgerton.
Yes.
Commissioner Morris.
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice.
Yes.
Mayor of St. Louis.
Yes. Discuss approved sixty-six twenty-one, approve a settlement agreement with Jim Heissel. Motion.
So move. Second.
Okay. This is, we've been dealing with this for a long time. And this is, we, he owes over forty thousand dollars in fines for code violations, and we agreed to settle with him for, well, we didn't agree, we offered to settle with him for ten thousand.
And then he brought his properties up to code.
Yeah, as long as he brings his property up to code, which he did.
He did.
Yeah, he did. So, and this is, this is one of the reasons that, that I even brought up that landlords, you know, absentee landlord stuff because.
Rental registry.
Rental registry, because they, we've been dealing with this stuff every week, you know. Shawna's been putting in hours and hours on this. This doesn't even probably get, it gets close to what, just actual prices, or actual fine and, but it's a way to get them moving on and get this done with.
I'm going to add to, you know, what did you say? It was forty thousand dollars means what the city is settling for just above the city's cost on this. This is a problem with landowner that, quite frankly, he's gotten this property up to code. We could walk out the street together and go look at another property that right now is not up to code. It's on the main strip, looks like absolute garbage. So we have come to an agreement because he's met the property code agreement and only recovering the city's costs, working with a landowner so that he can get his property up.
Like I all add right here, all this time that we've dealt with this guy, he has collected rent. He collects rent every month and never met, you know, I mean, and I believe there's accountability, being accountable, and having accountability to it that, you know, and I, I've been really a proponent for absentee landlords that buy property at sheriff's sales and what have you, and then they end up not taking care of it. And this here is, I guess it's just the way it is. But, anybody else? Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzpatrick?
Yes. I lost my paper.
On the letters for Park City.
Yeah. I lost my paper. What the hell am I doing?
Do you have a letter?
For Ty Connor.
Yeah, give me that. Yeah. I'll find it. Approve, discuss approve revised offer of employment for a letter to Ty Connor. Motion, please.
Motion. Second.
I can add this one, I'm talking about Ty Ryan, but Ty is a returner. So what you have before you is revised job offer to give him a forty-five cent increase from his last summer wage. It would not go into effect until his anniversary date, which is consistent with what we've done in the past with him.
Discussion? Nope. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Henryton?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzpatrick?
Yes. Discuss approve hiring Valente Ortiga for part-time seasonal for Park Department rate of fifteen dollars an hour. Motion.
So move. Second.
I can talk on that as well. A South Lloyd student, really excited to come in and get his hands dirty. We interviewed Valente as well as a handful of other applicants, and we have a couple of South Lloyd kids that are really shiny in this interview process. So that tends to be a good mix, but eager to get him started once he's completed all of his streams. I think that he's in the process with Tracy, but not all the way through them. Wouldn't start until junior second.
Sounds good. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Henryton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzpatrick?
Yes. Discuss approve hiring Caesar Farrell as part-time seasonal for Park Development as a rate of, Parks Department as a rate of fifteen dollars an hour. Motion, please.
Motion. Second.
Another South Lloyd student here, Mayor, and I will add that Caesar is a byproduct of the Craftman with Character program that our public works departments participated in. So that's a really exciting thing when you have high school students that kind of come in to shadow and get some onsite experience. And then down the road, as they turn eighteen and are looking for employment, we find an opening for them to get involved. So this is a win-win for the Craftman with Character program.
One more thing to add about Caesar. He can throw a baseball about eighty miles an hour. So if the Parks Department, Streets Department, Public Works guys want to get softball team together, he can also hit the hardball.
All right.
Also, these two South Lloyd students both came with letters of recommendation from Emily Rohr, who is the career and development counselor at the high school. So it's kind of nice when South Lloyd kids.
All right. Tracy, please.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Commissioner Henryton?
Yes.
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Yes. Discuss approve hiring Garrett Clayton as part-time seasonal for the Parks Department at a rate of fifteen dollars an hour. Motion.
So move. Second.
Another great interview here, Mayor. We're thrilled to have him. Garrett currently is away at school, but would be able to start mid-May. So then, he gets through all of his required steps with the P D and with the city clerk. He'll be good to go starting mid-May.
Okay. Tracy, please.
Commissioner, uh, Henryton?
You lose your place, too?
Commissioner Morris?
Yes.
Commissioner Prentice?
Yes.
Commissioner Edelman?
Yes.
Mayor Fitzpatrick?
Yes. Discuss approve request for food trucks and bag tournaments at B G liquor license holders and discuss clarification on intent of a B G license. Motion.
Motion. Second.
I can do this at a super high level for you, Mayor, and as we get into the weeds and discuss potential changes or revisions for whatever the board has in mind, probably we'll have to use more of our core, you can report back at later date. But at a very high level, years ago, under a completely different seat table, when the B G gaming license created, it was very specific on the things that would and would not be allowed if you had a B G gaming license. Now, what has happened, fast forward fifteen or more years, we are certain to want to allow the B G holders to do all the things that originally our codes said we're not going to allow them to do all these things. And it's just really making a kind of a sticky mess to try to keep straightening forth. So I know that the board that put the B G licenses originally in place is not here, and none of you are. And so I think we really just needed to make sure that staff is trying to understand. If there are changes that need to be made, we just want to hear everybody out. But right now, we just kind of, we have this long list of things we would not allow under a B G license, and we just kind of keep chipping away at it. And so now it's kind of turned into a mess. So we need, we need some assistance. And Shawna's prepared to go in a little deeper. Tracy can be comment if needed, and Roxanne's ready, but we really just, that's the super high level. We need help.
Brian?
For me, I don't know, fifteen years ago, a B G license ordinance was put in place. You know, it's very limited. I think time has obviously passed. I think it's important, I mean, there's, like Sunny has said, there's so much kind of stickiness to it, it's kind of turned toxic between, I'm assuming between the slots owners and the bar owners. There's lines blurred. I almost feel as though we need to consolidate the ordinances. If you have, if you have slots and you serve beer, you're a bar. If you have, just serve beer and no slots, then you're a cheaper ordinance, right? So the way I understand it is, if you have a slot place, slots, B G license, you're paying a higher ordinance dollar amount to have that or have that permit. And they're limited on what they can do. I feel as though they should be able to do what they need to do to keep their doors open and make money. Granted, we all know that the slots places are generating revenue for themselves at a high level. But, you know, we've got a national chain twenty minutes away, Hard Rock. We've got another huge casino coming in. I don't even know when it's, yeah, when it's set to open, but it's going to be big, right? So we have to do something to help keep these guys to be attractive and drive people coming to the door. That's kind of my two cents. And that's just, again, that's my input. I'm happy to listen to anybody else's advice. I'm still thinking.
You're still thinking?
I, I like simplification. Blame it simple. I like simplifying it. I have no idea how long, you said fifteen years. I've known it, yeah, the B G. The B G was what we limited, was that the license that we limited with the number of slots?
I think they're limited to six, yeah.
Yeah.
They're all limited to six.
That's state.
They're eleven. Lots are eleven.
Slots are, if it's slots? No, 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 our permits.
It's a one. It started at four.
Oh, you're limited.
Are you talking about machines?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Six machines.
Machines are six. I was talking about.
Oh, yeah, we're limited to a lot.
Yes, yes. But that was specifically for the B G, correct. So that would have to change if we're consolidating, right?
Well, the liquor, the B G license has a size limit, you know, for square footage. That's the thing in there that you can't make both the same, you know what I mean? You got to have, if you're going to have a B, okay, we talked about this, you know, this has been discussed more than once, but we went to the pool tables, we went to the dartboards. So if you want to, if you want to have a B G license, let's go back the way it was to begin with. If you want another license that's better than a B G license with a pool table and a dartboard and food trucks or whatever, charge them that. I mean, because there's some people that don't want this, you know. There's a bar license, there's a class A license for a bar, then have a, you know, three licenses. Otherwise, what are we going to do here? I mean, we got, we've, we've massaged this thing so many times that it's, to me, it's, there is a blurred line, you know.
Yeah, I, I think there should be a permit for alcohol, and then there should be a permit for the, if you're going to do the other. So is there going to be places that don't have gaming, or should be places?
What does class A, they have fifty-one percent has to be, a class A license, you have to have fifty-one percent selling food and liquor or just alcohol?
Alcohol, food, any other.
Alcohol, food, and anything. It has to be fifty-one percent, and your gaming has to be forty-nine.
No. Class A licenses are fifty percent of grocery receipts are from the sale of alcoholic liquors. Class A A is like a bar restaurant, where fifty percent of your grocery receipts are from something other than alcohol. It could be food sales. So those are the two types of licenses that you have. You have a class A, which is a bar only, that's twenty-four fifty per year, and then a class A A, which is like a bar restaurant, and that's twenty-four fifty per year. The B G license is a special liquor license that's a little bit more expensive. It's seventy-five hundred. And the reason why it's more expensive is because there just aren't many sales that typically come out of a B G establishment, because most of the dollars are spent clearly on the machines as opposed to ordering drinks or food. So that's the difference between the three locations.
So what would be our next step at this point?
Well, I, I guess I would probably just need some feedback on, on exactly how you would like to amend the ordinance. It sounds like there's maybe some discussion to get rid of the B G altogether and to have a bar license and then a bar restaurant license.
I'd just come up with a pin.
I, well, what do you, I don't know.
I can tell you, in short, we get notices from one holder or the other saying, I have this license. And Shawna can probably go into more detail. She's the one that gets them. But they kind of tell on each other, like, why are you allowing them to do that? We can't do this. Go tell them they can't do this. They're having a, they have bags out in their parking lot. They have a beer patio. They're not supposed to have that. You don't let us do it. Why are you letting them do it? And then, if they call somebody on the council, the count, this particular council tends to be like, okay, hold on, let's tweak that. I kind of like the idea of you being able to do a beer garden or a bags tournament or, you know, all the things that have happened over the last handful of years. So it's just kind of made it so that our ordinance, the staff is working to try to uphold, isn't meeting the needs and wishes of this board. And so we need to clean it up because otherwise we go out and try to uphold the ordinance. But if they call you guys, the board wants to change it.
The issue, though, with giving everyone, like, the B G is the ability to be able to have a class A, is that fifty percent of their grocery receipts will not be from the sale of alcoholic liquor. That's the problem that I think that you'll probably have. And so what's, you know, what you could do is just tailor the B G ordinance so that it matched the, you know, what's allowed under a class A, right? But still treated it as a separate ordinance because they're not going to meet the fifty percent rule on the sale of alcoholic liquor. You see what I'm saying?
Yes.
Does that make sense? Okay. So I, again, if you're looking for a way to.
Well, you know, we got the, we got the B G people that wants changes, but there's, every time we change something, we have, like, the people next door here mad because we're allowing these guys to do the same thing they're doing, you know. I don't know.
To be, to be clear, on my time on the council, we have changed the B G ordinance to limit it to eleven. We have changed it so they can have a dartboard. We have changed it so that they can have a jukebox and a pool table. We're not talking about earth-shattering things. These are things that will drive people to stay in the business, just a scoach longer, have that extra beer, put another twenty dollars in the machine. That's it. Now, if these guys want to do a bags tournament outside, I truly don't, don't care. If they want to drive a food truck, have a food truck come in and park like any other bar, fine. They can't, if they want, they can't serve food, let them do it. That, that's my stance. I don't feel like that's anything that's harming anybody.
They got karaoke and that stuff, too. That'd have to be allowed, too, then.
I guess my other point would be, can we look at, I don't know, I feel like Love's Park has a pretty good grasp on what they're doing. Can we look at that?
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I mean, really, if what you're looking for is just to allow them to have the same allowance as an A, then you would just strike the subparagraph E where it talks about the other games that are not allowed, and you would just get rid of that.
Right? Like, that just strikes every kind of.
If you want them to be able to have a patio or beer garden, then you just strike subparagraph C.
I mean, they obviously have to have the space for it. You can't just go up.
Right. We have zoning ordinances for that kind of stuff. But if that's really what you're looking to accomplish, we would just pare down the B G license so that none of those things were prohibitions. Because right now, they're prohibitions, and that's why, you know, requests that come in are otherwise denied. If it's not a prohibition, then.
What do you think, Courtney?
Hi.
No, what Roxanne just said, what do you think?
I think if, I think they're just a bar. The focus is on gaming. So I, I feel like they should be the same. Like, as I said, you want to have a bags tournament at, at a gaming place with, with beer? So do it. Like, I feel like they should have a lot of the same flexibilities that a bar has.
Kenny?
I agree.
Brian?
I'd say keep it the way it is right now.
Brian?
I've already said what I need to say.
No, I mean, you agree with.
No, I agree with what Roxanne is saying. I've kind of always felt like that line in that was restrictive beyond what it needs to be. That's it.
I would, I would agree with you. I feel like Love, from outward appearance, it, it looks like Love's Park might be.
Can we see that? Can we see the Love's Park agreement? Tracy, Tracy wants to say something. Go ahead.
Just two things. One, for when, when food trucks are coming in, there's two things. If a food truck comes in within, I think it's a hundred yards of a restaurant, then they have to go to that restaurant and get permission to come in. That's the first thing. The second thing is, now, if we're allowing food trucks in parking lots that are shared parking lots with other units that are in there, then it becomes, it could become, um, wait a minute, I can't get my customers in because you're, you have taken all this area up and, and, those are just two things that we're.
All right. Can he, he would, can he add something to this? I know he's.
Go ahead.
Hello, I'm South Lloyd. I've got a little, I own sale slots. I guess I'll add a little bit of, at the beginning with the licenses. For a slot parlor, you know, we pay more per year per slot parlor instead of a bar, but we're restricted. I am wondering if Cousins Food Truck, Cousins Made Lobster could come to sell slots, which I think is why this is on the meeting today. And, you know, I think it's, makes more sense that a person that's paying more per year would at least be allowed to do the same things as a bar, especially when a slot parlor or boutique gaming is usually seen as a nicer type place instead of a bar, you know, different type of atmosphere. And I think if a food truck and restaurants and other businesses in the area, in my case, the strip mall, pod, and landlord are okay with it, I think it's only good, I mean, you guys brought up the casino, and you even brought up karaoke and touch tunes, which like everyone in other cities does anyway. And I mean, even if it's not something that you have to pay for. pay for, people would, would probably do it anyway, and I feel like at least if you allow food trucks, I'm not, you know, bags tournaments, I mean, I don't know how that works, but when you have a food truck, if a business is gonna come and sit outside and, you know, they have to pay the city as well a little bit, I think it can be only good until something bad happens.
Well, they would, like Tracy said, though, if you have a food truck and pull outside a restaurant, you know, that's not good for the restaurant either. But there's a lot of things people don't realize here, if you're getting thirty-five, thirty-four percent of everything that's brought in, and I know.
Only for a food truck?
No, for, for, for gaming. Gaming pays you thirty-four percent.
Yeah.
And a bar does not make thirty-four, when they spend a dollar, they don't get thirty-four cents right back right off that bar, you know. Cause you can figure that out with your, what you pay for liquor and how much you make on it.
You know, I mean, there's two slot parlors in the same strip mall, and we don't have the same customers, and we don't make the same amount of money at all, and I think if, you know.
Most people that go to them don't go there to drink anyway.
Yeah, but even, you know, as an example, just so like everyone's aware, you know, I mean, between any given year even, I could make so much on slots versus so much on alcohol. One year it could be completely different, so even this year, I'm wondering, like, do I apply for the bar license now? Which honestly, like, if I apply as, apply as the bar with slots, and I make more, more money on alcohol, and I show that, then don't you guys at the city lose five thousand dollars off the top? You're kind of incenting the slot parlors and boutiques to actually, like, change focus instead of just kinda collecting on the seventy-five hundred and letting us, you know, even make more money. Like, for some weeks I could make.
We've dealt with that before, with over here.
Yeah, if I could just chime in on that. So I, I hear your logic, but unfortunately, that just, we, we don't find that that, that happens here, because there are so few BG licenses. If you were to say, I'm gonna give up my BG license and instead apply for an A because I believe that my receipts are gonna bear out, that I have fifty percent more in alcohol sales, what ultimately ends up happening is then that BG ends up getting taken by someone else. And so if you have a year where you don't have fifty percent or more in alcohol sales, then you lose the ability to have the BG.
So what's the difference between a parlor that turns into a bar and just leaves it? You know what I'm saying? Like, I just don't understand, you know, it's.
Because your gaming might pay, make more than what the liquor sells. It wants a gaming, you know, and you then, you can't, you're not supposed to do that.
But like, there are bars, like, what do you do with, like, you know, victory, I'm just using the exact example, like, if they're, if they were a slot parlor, and all of a sudden, they're making more money on alcohol for the whole, you know, like, I just, I just don't understand why you would restrict someone's gaming.
I, I mean, you guys made your decision, I mean, that's what, the way you guys feel. I, I don't really have a decision, one way or the other on this.
I can prepare an amendment or medicine, bring it to the, you know, next council meeting.
Pat, after, we'll let you talk, afterwards, we'll let you talk afterwards.
I just have one thing to say. What he's doing, can't this simply have one thing, raise it, raise the tax? If you make more, you pay more tax.
I know, I know, but that's okay, we got that figured out. Anybody, well, it's, we're gonna have Roxanne draw up something, we'll take a look at it next, how's that?
So I do think though, for tonight, mayor, we do have a request for a food truck and a bags tournament, with a specific license holder, right? Two differences, so we, we need to decide, you know, so is the idea, let's allow these two.
Sounds like that's the consensus.
And then come back at another meeting with, okay.
Alright, that's up to you guys, yeah, I'm fine with it, whatever you guys want to do. We got, we got three that said yes.
Motion, I make a motion. To approve.
Well, I, I'm sorry, hold on.
I don't think.
It's not on the agenda that way.
It's a discussion, isn't it?
It's a discussion.
It says discuss.
No, it says discuss and approve.
We have a bags tournament and a chocolate event.
Okay, I apologize.
Alright, I make a motion to approve allowing these two separate entities to have food truck and a bags tournament.
One time only?
I will second that.
They have one time only?
One time, one time only until the ordinance is updated. Still second.
Test run. Now, what do we do?